All right, well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for being here with us for this special meeting of the Tulsa City Council. It is Tuesday, 29th, 2018. The time is 7:04 PM. And we'll begin this meeting in a roll like this. But what, did you hear what she's gotten out of her seat?
Okay.
Sorry.
Councilor Long?
Here.
Councilor Holmes?
Here.
Councilor Hirsch?
Here.
Councilor Bliss?
We do have a call. So we'll now move to item number three, which is our public comments section. Comments will be accepted from the general public concerning topics that are not included in the meeting's agenda. Individuals will be limited to three minutes of speaking time. The cumulative total of all comments from the public shall not exceed 15 minutes. Preference will be given to the Tulsa City citizens, and we will comply with the Oklahoma Urban Meeting Act and won't allow for any discussion or action raised by, on the topic raised by the speaker during this comment period. Is there anyone who would like to make a comment at this time? Mr. Uzo?
Thanks for the opportunity. Just a couple of comments. First of all, the council had a meeting I could generate and approve the compilation and gave to the letter of Michael Reed. As of this point, I'm unaware of receiving a compilation or an audit report from that particular organization. I'd like to request at the next meeting that you furnish the taxpayers a status report regarding the compilation, the extent of the audit. If it's beyond or anything like that, I have no information on it. Second of all, since the city treasurer is not in attendance, I request that, every time the council needs to furnish a list of all the investments within, and which amounts, and how the proceeds are being invested. I think it's appropriate that that should be handled so the city would be more cognizant of where the funds are and how they're being used and what the return on investments would be. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Is there anyone else who'd like to make any comments at this time? Seeing none, we'll move to item number four, which is discussion of possible action to adopt ordinance number 1263-2018 proposing a new substantial hotel tax and related incentive rebate, as well as a related resolution and a related memorandum of understanding. Councilor Holmes?
When we last were here, Councilor Long asked some questions about the...
Can you do me a favor? I wasn't here at the last meeting. Could you?
Oh, yeah.
I know Mr. Patel that...
Who am I? My name's Ryan Langston. I'm an attorney here in town, representing for all of us.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You bet. Councilor Long, last time, had questions about the chamber's point of view on the proposal. And so before we dive into the nuts and bolts of it, we'd like to turn the mic over to Cindy Morrison, the chamber director, to speak briefly on that.
Cindy, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. On behalf of our board of directors, last week at our board meeting, they elected to respectfully request your support in placing this proposed ordinance on the ballot, on the August 28th ballot, for the vote of the people of Talalqua. We feel that this is a decision that, of course, needs a vote of the people, and it gives these gentlemen the opportunity to help educate and explain how this all works. And I think they'll do a little bit of that tonight, but we extend the proposal to place that on the ballot if you would. Thank you.
We, since last time, after including some of the questions, we tried to be as prepared as we could to take into those in detail. But I think it would be helpful to just kind of reiterate the purpose, the kind of genesis of the proposal, and then some of the action items that we've taken and followed up on since last time.
Here in Talalqua, for major substantial hotels containing more than 80 rooms is financially marginal. The benefits to have in a facility like that in the community are numerous, and would include additional jobs, increased sales tax revenue, property tax revenue, that trickle through effects of a lot of visitors into town, as well as the potential network effects of having a facility like that. So the proposal to help to bring those types of facilities to town is the creation of a new incremental 6% tax on substantial-sized hotels, which is based on the actual collections, that's in addition to the existing sales tax and hotel motel tax and any other applicable taxes. The proposal is that the ordinance be adopted with a life of 25 years, and then a maximum incentive term to the operator of that facility for 20 years, or the remaining life of the ordinance. The incentive take the form of a rebate back to the operator of the 96% of the actual collections of that. And it is only applicable to newly constructed substantial hotels within the city of Talalqua. The bottom-line impact is anticipated to be approximately 50 new jobs in the city at the facility, as well as all the incremental property tax revenues, and together approximately $5 million total incremental tax revenue to the city of Talalqua over the life of it. That's kind of why we're here. That's the reason for the proposal. Since last time, and some of the questions that were asked, I think Councilor Bliss had asked the city attorneys for Lloyd about getting some input from OMAC related to the potential risks related to it. I understand that Mr. Lloyd reached out to OMAC and we referred to another city attorney who's experienced in these matters. That attorney reviewed it in depth and detailed, and provided detailed comments that I believe were largely stylistic and typographical, not in any sort of substantive concerns or anything. Mr. Lloyd and I sat down and went through those, as well as additional questions and points of clarification that Mr. Lloyd wanted. And we worked through all of those, and we incorporated those, those points of feedback from that city attorney that was referred by OMAC. And so they're in the version that's in front of you. On the final read-through...
Coming over here, there was one additional typo that was caught. I mentioned it, Mr. Lloyd, and he suggested, yeah, let's go ahead and clarify that. So I have this version, which is the identical one to you with a change of one word, and that's in the effective date section. It has no real substantive effect, I think, but I think Mr. Lloyd's opinion was, yeah, be clear, if you go ahead and change that one word, to mimic what was in the hotel motel tax as it was enacted originally in '87. And on behalf of the clarify point of the specific word, it's in the effective date section. It originally read that it's effective on or after October 1st, 2018. It should have read on and after. The effective date is mandated by statute, so it really isn't even required to be in it, and would have been fine as written. But again, that was the language used in the original one, and Mr. Lloyd suggested we go ahead and clarify that. I think that that's kind of a lot, but it also covers the major points that were raised at the last meeting. And so if there's any questions the council has, or if you want to add to or correct anything I've said, you can tell them we open it to questions and comments.
Councilors, do you have any questions of Mr. Langston?
Not, oh, sorry.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So in doing this, this doesn't touch the existing hotel motel tax?
That's correct. Has no effect whatsoever.
And so there's no, so this just lays on top of that tax? So if you're an existing hotel in Talalqua, there's no change to do in business?
That's exactly right.
But if you're new, and you are 81 rooms or more, then you have the option of taking this tax? Or can they opt out and say, "I don't want it," or "I don't need it"?
Good question, Councilor. The answer is that it's not optional. It's a mandatory tax on any facilities that are constructed after the enactment of the ordinance, or it's approved by the effective date of the ordinance. That meet the qualifications, 81 rooms or more. So then the tax must be collected and remitted for a period of 25 years.
Right. 20 goes to the city, or to the hotel here.
Or...
And for 20 years, and then for the last five years, it comes back to the city for the hotel, for use of the hotel motel taxes.
Yes, with one point of clarification, the life of the ordinance itself is 25 years period. It'll run for 25 years from its effective date. So any hotels newly constructed, substantial-sized hotels built in the first five years, the operators of those would be eligible for the full 20-year rebate. But once, let's say, someone constructed one and placed it into operation in year 10, at that point, there's only 15 years of the ordinance remaining, and so that would be the maximum term of their incentive, as well as the collection of the tax.
So this doesn't just go on the books from here till it's repealed or whatnot? This is only for the next 25 years?
That's correct, Councilor.
As the sunset provision in 1944?
Exactly. You got me on the spot. I didn't actually compute the date, but 25 years from the effective date.
Sorry, okay. Hi.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, sorry. Section 7-706, could you better clarify that? Is that stating that there is a document separate from the IRS taxes and exemption letter that someone would have to present in order to be... Because the way I read it is somebody would have to go to my friend, the city clerk, and get a piece of paper saying, "I am exempt for sales tax." And so if they come rolling in on a business trip at midnight on a Saturday night, they cannot get that from her, because I'm sure you don't work midnight, Saturday night. But, I mean, so they would have to pay the tax without the document from her.
That's correct, Councilor. This provision is identical to the one in the existing hotel motel tax.
Okay.
So again, part of the approach here was to be as, to mirror the existing provisions in their administration and everything, so that it's as seamless as possible. And that provision is unchanged, other than maybe the terminology moves exactly how it's set up. So if anybody today that comes and stays at a motel or motel in Talalqua, if they meet the requirements for that exemption, they would be exempt. But you're right, they would be required to go and get the certificate from the city clerk that shows that they're entitled to that exemption.
Just curious, have you ever had a request like that? No, I have not. And then section 7-708, refer to record retention, the three-year thing, and isn't, aren't most things electronic? And since this is a chain hotel, isn't that going to be stored at Mr. Patel's corporate location and not necessarily here?
He can speak to that specific point of your question, Councilor. But again, this is identical to that in the existing hotel motel tax ordinance, and nothing new that's existed. So whatever's happening today is exactly what would happen with this.
Got you. And keep in mind, of course, I don't think any of this... Mayor, were you here when the first one went? No, you weren't even here, were you? The first?
Hotel motel, no?
Ordinance when it took effect.
Oh, gosh, I was 12.
You were 12, okay. We're definitely inheriting this from our forefathers, so to speak.
Sure. And there's perhaps, in light of that issue that passed, the technology's changed a little bit. There's some things that if you were sitting down with a clean slate today, you might do it a little bit differently.
Right.
But again, and in consultation with the city attorney, there was some concern about having the existing hotel motel tax ordinance, and then this ordinance be out of sync with one another and the requirements of their administration, because then you're creating two sets of requirements. It complicates it, rather than just kind of dovetail it.
Right.
That was the goal, to just dovetail with the existing system.
So how come are we asking for 20 or 25 years versus a shorter period of time?
Yeah. Again, Mr. Patel, correct, or add to if I misspeak about it. But the simple answer is, I think, related to Mr. Patel's proposed facility, that's 20 years is a term that is necessary to make it not financially marginal anymore, and to make it workable, so that you could come and build a hotel in the facility. But again, in consultation with the city attorney about how do we make this address city's concerns and, you know, any sort of legal issues, let's make it have a length of time, that it also does act as an incentive to other hotels, that it isn't just specific to his. So it should have some life beyond this, in addition to just providing some flexibility in the starting point and the end point. But the question to me comes, well, what is that number? How long should it be? You know, 25 years is, that's a fair piece out there, but it's shorter than something longer.
Councilor Holmes, if you remember, originally, we had proposed the current Holiday Inn Express in this, in the original proposal. I believe with the city attorney's help and some legal help, they felt like that since it's an existing hotel, that it would be best kept out of the proposal. So this new proposal, that proposal, it's strictly on the new hotel that's being proposed. That's why we had to extend the terms out just a little longer than what we had originally had with the existing hotel in the new hotel.
Okay, that's why. I was, in my mind, I knew that that was longer than some of the original discussions that we'd had months and months and months.
Exactly.
And that's why.
Yeah.
And then my question, and I don't know if Grant wants to answer it, if you want to jump in. Section 7-724, the 1.5%, is that derived from the existing hotel motel tax on the delinquency rate?
It is.
Because I was ready to go apply for a loan at 1 foot off.
And I think, yeah, that's identical, Councilor. It's the same.
And when you were 12, that was probably going into straight off the delinquency.
I'm kind of geeky, and I wasn't looking up interest rates, so I don't remember.
And then, once again, and Mayor, I know you weren't here, and you mentioned you hadn't watched that reading yet on the video, but my issue, and I briefly got to talk to Cindy about it, and we've got three current, or four current chamber board members here and a few ex-chamber board members, that just, we had talked about in the past. And I've talked to Mr. Patel about this as well, going again to raise the overall hotel motel tax in conjunction with what Mr. Patel is proposing. We've also talked about it from a countywide basis, and I know the chamber had your vote and voted to support this initiative. And I just, again, one of my thoughts, I think it's a good idea that we need to look at doing the hotel motel tax, either city or countywide, increasing it, because we are still significantly lower than our neighboring communities, and communities in our quote-universe that we often compare ourselves to.
I suppose having these be two totally separate levies may provide some flexibility where you could, if you so chose...
Right.
You could increase one and not touch the this one.
Right, right, right. I mean, ultimately, either way, it goes to the voted people.
Correct.
That's just my concern, is trying to come ex-chamber. I know that's a good thing to invest in.
I saw a pro forma at one time. Do you have one revised for this?
For this week? I think I have.
So I have a question in this, which you might not be able to answer this. It might be maybe Grant, maybe the mayor, or Dowers. But how does this...
Anybody?
You too, you might not be able to answer. How would this go hand-in-hand with the Tiff district? So we're looking at doing the Tiff district on the north side of town. And part of that Tiff district is, the developer has said there's a potential hotel that's going to be in there. And so if we're looking at the Tiff district, and then we've got this law, are they able to take advantage of both? Are they able to only take advantage of one?
So, you know, there's nothing really to do with... They have no reason they couldn't do both?
Yeah, in fact, I think that it would be, I mean, I'm not an expert on the Tiffs, and so I might be speaking out of school a little bit, but I believe that it should be applicable by its provisions to vote. So it wouldn't work to where, you know, the application of the Tiff district would extend beyond its boundaries, but it would work where this proposed substantial motel tax would apply to any Tiff district, so long as it is within this city of Talalqua.
So, just thinking out loud, what's the difference, what would be the advantage of doing something like this, as opposed to doing some sort of Tiff district in that development to help?
Yep.
That it's not necessarily getting a tax that's going back to the developer, they're getting it on the other end.
Right. So it's a good question, Councilor, and actually, we discussed that. And again, I'm not an expert on Tiffs. We looked at it and talked about it long enough to conclude that this was the better path for this proposal, and there's a couple of reasons why. I understand that the Tiff district applies to those increments, it's a tax increment financing, so it applies to the incremental taxes, and it could be either sales taxes or property taxes within that district. But it is not an establishment of an additional tax percentage, it's an increment of the increase that's collected into the existing tax regime. And so this layers on top of that are bolts to it, so it's really apples to oranges. This has limited targeted application to those substantial hotels that, you know, that are constructed after this, as well as administrative simplicity. It was a lot more complicated, from what I understand, to get a Tiff district in place. And this is a fairly straightforward proposal. Did we just ask the voters of the city of Talalqua, are you in favor for this limited-scope incremental tax on transient guests that substantial hotels constructed afterward? As a carrot to bring folks like Mr. Patel in to count to construct these facilities? Sorry, that's a bit long-winded answer to your question, but I meant that.
So you're asking if we were to vote yes tonight, you're asking to put it on the August ballot?
That's right, Councilor. So this being an even-numbered year, there's only certain specified dates within which a special election can be held in August. So we have August 22nd or November 6th, I think, whatever that date is. And so, yes, the request is, if you approve this tonight, its effect is limited to calling a special election. This will be enacted and applicable only if it's approved by a majority of the voters in the election, and wouldn't be if it's not so approved.
And it has to be turned in to the election board by Wednesday?
June 13th. So you back off, you have to have it in 75 days prior to the date of the election.
Before a special election.
Right. To get it on the ballot.
That's right.
Then print it in the ballots.
And if I remember correctly, you all are going to bear the burden of the cost of that election.
That's right.
Okay.
And so one of the documents that we prepared, part of the packet, is a very simple memorandum of understanding. One benefit is that because it's on the date of a regular federal and state election, the incremental cost to the special election is just the ballots, which the county election board said they would estimate around $600. So Mr. Patel's company is willing to tender the $750 pursuant to that simple letter agreement, essentially, that the city would apply to that, for that election to cover the costs.
Then it's only registered voters in Talalqua? So it doesn't apply to the county? The county voters don't get a vote on it? It's just registered voters in Talalqua?
That's correct, Councilor.
And plug the deadline to register is right, correct?
That's for the June 26th.
How much would you expect to receive over this period of time?
We're looking at approximately 1.2, I believe, I think it's 1.9 million dollars over 25 years, or 20 years.
Just to you, to your hotel?
Yeah. So typically, Councilor, what we do is, we take those funds to a financial institution and say, "These are our expected collections." And they basically give those funds upfront to develop the hotel. And that's our whole purpose, is to try to get this project off the ground, and that's based upon future tax projections. And they don't give us all of those, the 1.9, they'll value it at like a million two, million three, something to that effect. So we wouldn't totally see the full benefit of those.
Right, it's basically collateral.
Yeah.
You know, I would be in favor for it if we let the people vote on it during a regular election. I think putting in, it's hard enough to get people to vote on the city council, you know. I think that total of 300 people come out and vote and split that, whatever I was elected on. But I think if we really want a true representation of what the people feel, is to bring this to an election in November, or I don't know if we can get it on June 26th.
Councilor Holmes, the purpose of us having it in the August is, we have some deadlines with the project and the developer, which is Turkey Nation, and they want us to break ground by October. And for us to make this possible, we really would like to have the voted people before the November election. We would have gladly waited, but we have some deadlines by the developer to try to get this project off the ground by a certain date.
And there is an election in August, and there will be, I mean, there'll be runoffs. I mean, there's like 13 people running for every one race. I mean, so there'll be an election. Now, I think TWA has also been bringing the ballot in, and asking for it to be in August. I had a question there in the back.
Yes, ma'am.
How many rooms is this proposed hotel, Mr. Patel?
It's 90 rooms.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Uzo?
Yes. I had made some phone calls today. I'm sorry if my voice was still up. I get a lot more calls now that I'm running for office. But there's similar proposal was made by the Tulsa Chamber of Commerce, and the Tulsa Chamber of Commerce did not even consider it on the agenda for voting, because they were going to use all the money for the payment of tourism, and was not even brought, you know, up to a vote or anything like that. And if we are going to do something like that, I think Mr. Holmes' idea of actually having it, because you remember the last bond issue that you passed for 25 million? We only have 525 people do that. That is not a representation of the people in the city of Talalqua. Okay, I'm running for office, we're going to have a runoff, you know, if I'm one of the people involved, but I think a more representative of what the opinion of the people would be, would be in November, you know. And one other thing that we have to consider this, since all the funding, and this is the comments for the people I've visited within Tulsa, because there's only 24, 14 of us in the entire state, and sort of by the financial forensic, so we have a little limited circle of friends, but we have expertise to go select areas. And they indicate that subsidizing one person gives them a competitive advantage against the other motel owners, because they will have money. And as I read the agenda, which may or may not be correct, that you would be rebending the money to that person to encourage other hotels to come here. Okay, what about the people that are here? You know, I mean, you have one hotel, you build a hotel. Would that people actually be spending money to bring other competition in against themselves? I have a hard time grasping that, you know, and that's what the other people kept on saying. You know, if they have the money, would they really encourage other hotels to compete against them?
I think as a form of clarification, the answer is no, they wouldn't be paying money to bring competitors against themselves. This tax would only apply to any hotel, 81 rooms or bigger, and there aren't any at the moment, so...
Well, the way I read it is to encourage hotels to locate, you know, in Talalqua. This is what I read.
Correct.
Now, we have an attorney who, I think, have to put legal lease of it, but again, from an accountant's perspective, I view it differently, you know, in terms of what the language may indicate, okay, from a financial point of view. Thank you.
Mr. Patel, Mr. Langston, did I have that correct? That it would only apply, of course, to those 81-room or larger hotels, and there aren't any that get them on?
Sure. It would, the tax would not apply to any existing hotel in Talalqua. In fact, if there was any competitive advantage, I would think the existing hotels would have a competitive advantage, because it'd be at a lower tax rate.
And again, the structure of the ordinance is, if anyone comes into the city of Talalqua and constructs an 81-plus-room facility during the life of the ordinance, then they're entitled to the rebate. So it's not, it's not isolated to one, and it's not, it's not a matter of Mr. Patel's company paying anything or something like that. This is an incentive out there available to anyone. Come build a substantial hotel in the city of Talalqua, and you, you're eligible for this rebate. That's going to be applicable to anyone who would come and construct one in the city of Talalqua.
What I've, since you guys were... Since you guys were last here approximately three weeks ago, the biggest question I've been asked is, what happens if this goes to a vote of the people, and the overwhelming majority is a no? And so, that's it, Neil, it's not going to happen. So what does that do to your project? Is it completely dead on arrival, not going to happen?
Counsel, I feel would make it very difficult for us to raise investors based upon the returns we would have to, the amount of money we would have to put in. So I'm not saying that it's absolutely not, but it would be very difficult to make it. And again, this would really speed up the process. It would, you know, we would meet our deadline with the Cherokee Nation. And again, if it doesn't pass, we're back to the drawing boards. And I would say even the Cherokee Nation would be saying, hey, are we going to meet the deadline too? So there'd be a lot of questions we would have to answer.
Any other questions? Counselors, is there any? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sir. Please come up to the microphone, get your name, and get your question.
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Rick Goppi. I own a couple of motels here, Roadway Inn and the O'Klinian Civic. Right now, my occupancy is down at less than 50 percent. And there is no real, real big reason to, you know, have another motel built right away. I know this is a 6% tax, and it's called substantial hotel tax. As the name suggests, it's substantial. It's substantial to the customer. Somebody coming in from out of town, if he has to pay 6% more than any other town, I need examples of something that was successful like this before. And as I'm reading in between the lines, I'm thinking, it's my opinion, people are asking the city to raise the 6% tax so they can go and borrow some money to, so they can build. I think the voters should definitely say no to this, because they can do it without the help of the city or the substantial tax that customers are having to be, having to pay for. And the other way it affects the existing motels is, there is a 6% incentive for the new hotel already. It's like a 6% return on their investment already, in addition to what they make. That makes them more competitive, and that's less advantage for the existing motels. This is my opinion. So please consider this, and then take your decision. Thank you.
Ms. Chuzo, one last time.
Just one more comment.
Counsel Long, that's a very good point. We have to remember, I was down there doing a teacher's walkout, okay, you know, talking to the... And they're very upset when they attempted to do the hotel tax, and the lobbyists voted against it. So she has a very succinct point. When you talked about the teachers coming in to vote, you know, for an organization to vote against it, against the teacher's salary and their pay raises and things like that, they're not going to be accommodating, most likely. I can't tell whether they changed their mind or not, but there were a lot of angry people in there when I was there. And they were not very pleasant when I was doing my filing and coming out with their signs and everything. But again, that's the key thing. I think it's very important for you to think about the outcome, you know, with the time invested, especially with what happened at the state level with this particular type of incident. Okay? That's all.
Ms. Langston, one more time.
Yes, sir. Just to kind of follow up on a couple of points raised, to clarify, at the risk of being redundant, what's not being proposed isn't across-the-board 6% tax on all hotels and motels in the city. It is only, would only apply to any hotels newly constructed after it goes into effect that are 81-room or more. And additionally, it's perhaps a fine point, but it's worth clarifying that the proposal is that once Mr. Patel's company or any other hotel company that comes and builds one, makes that substantial investment, employs all those people to build it, and places it into operation, the only thing that they receive is 6% of the actual collections, the tax on the actual collections, it's 6% of the actual collections, and it's 96% of that that's rebated back. And the importance of that, and why it's really important to clarify that it's not a guaranteed 6% return on investment, is that any hotel operator, substantial hotel operator, is only going to get what they can, can actually generate, that portion that's available to them. If they don't, if that hotel sits half-empty, the rebate is likely to be less than anticipated. So there's certainly no guarantee, and there's certainly a substantial amount of risk. And that's why we think that it's a good thing, that if the hotels can compete and draw those people to stay at their hotels and generate those sales tax revenues, that's going to have knock-on effects for the entire community that is positive. Those people are going to be in the tank, spending money. But if they don't actually operate it and collect anything, then they don't receive anything as an incentive. Hopefully, that's helped. I muddled it too much. I kind of tripped over it a bit. Did you have any?
I'd love to answer any of the questions, but again, I think the purpose of the August vote is to try to get this project off the ground before our deadlines with the developers.
And remind me again, Mr. Patel, if you break ground in October, what would be the estimated completion?
One year.
One year before you break the ground?
We have it in operation.
And then remind us again, the Cherokee Nation new facility is also going to be breaking ground around that same time as well, which is why we're synchronizing, attempting to synchronize all this, so that everything will be done and ready day one.
We would love to open at the time when the casino is opening. It's going to bring in a lot of people from out of town, and we would love to host all of those folks coming into town. And again, that's jobs for our community, it's tax dollars for our community. And being right next to the casino, I think, that'll keep people in town, especially these big hotels.
Make a comment from there, sir. Make it a brief, please. Okay. Come on up, and then make a brief.
Thanks for the time again. I really appreciate the intuition that we need more hotels at the point when the casino is coming up. I think they can do it without this extra tax. And that's a business decision that they need to make. And if they can do it without the help and without taxing other people, I would be more than happy that, you know, we have better hotels, bigger hotels here, which is a requirement, like which will help with the Cherokee Nation new casino. But if they can do it without taxing, you know, without imposing the substantial tax, that would be even better. Thank you.
All right, Counselors, let's keep this in your court now. Do you have any other questions, or would you like to make a motion?
I don't want to make a motion. I want to table this until the next meeting. Give me another week to digest some more information.
We have a motion to table from Counselor Cohn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Counselor Long. There's no discussion on our tabling motions, so Floyd, give us the roll call, please.
Counselor Cohn?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
No.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Gentlemen, we will be back six days from now, on the Fourth of June, and we expect to see a lot of people crowd here again with us again next week. So with that, we'll move on to item number five, which is discussion and possible action to approve a resolution authorizing the city to proceed with condemnation of certain property located on East Ross Street and allowing Tim Baker, an attorney licensed in the state of Oklahoma, and general counsel for Cherokee Nation Business, to assist as co-counsel in regard to said condemnation. Mr. Johnson?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Counsel. Thank you. I don't know if you've heard or not, but the Cherokee Nation spent a few million dollars building a clinic.
Just a few.
Just a few. And I don't know if you've traveled down East Ross recently, but it's in need of repair. And so, we, through a partnership with the Cherokee Nation, are reconstructing Ross, and it will be the main entrance for the new clinic. Well, through those negotiations, through our survey, and we found properties that we need to access for temporary easements, utility easements, and permanent easements. And through our negotiations with those property owners, we've landed on two that we were unable to come to terms with. And I think you have in your packet, there's a location where we're talking about. I think there's two different situations going on. It's two different property owners. I mean, one is, we've had trouble, I think there are a lot of heirs to the property. And being able to get those multiple heirs to sign off on the easements required is then challenging. And the other one, to the south, I think there's some issues with drainage that that property owner is concerned about. And so, they haven't been willing to accept our three-year term. And so, unfortunately, we've had to get to this point of condemnation. And the resolution that's in your packet is a resolution to allow Tim Baker, a local attorney, to help us out with this process, in cooperation with our city attorney.
Counselors, do you have any questions of Mr. Lloyd or Mr. Johnson?
We have everything worked out from the bypass up to that designated area.
I think this is the only properties we need to do what we're planning on doing. But this resolution will allow Mr. Baker to work on the nation on East Ross.
Those pink, it's not the scale, right? Like, they don't have them just like...
That's about the, approximately where the easements, the easements are going to be near the roadway.
Oh, just near them. Like, they look almost long.
Oh, yeah, a 10-foot wide stretch.
So we're trying to show you.
Yeah.
The first thing I wanted to do was...
Verge edge.
I was not blowing up your receiver.
Counselors, what are you supposed to do?
I would be ready to make a motion.
A motion for approval of the resolution?
Yes.
And second, Counselor Cohn. Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none? Cool. Wait. Hold on.
I just have just a personal, I want to...
Oh!
Has the Cherokee Nation been, are they helping pay for any of the street widens? Is there a cut down?
No, this is totally their cost.
It is totally their cost?
Totally their cost.
Anything else we can add?
Yeah, we've been throwing stuff onto the laundry list. Any other questions?
We're putting a stoplight at the other end of the street there that...
I have absolutely no details about the project at this point, on that level of specificity.
Okay, because what people are doing is essentially going out there trying to make it bright. They're all coming down that empty line there, and exiting with a stoplight. You know, that's an accommodation they're getting on the bypass.
Sure.
You know, they'll be disliked, you know, lengthy line at about 4:30 or 5:00.
I would point you to the Cherokee Nation Roads Department, and let them know all about that. And what we just need is the approval of this resolution from Mr. Baker to really act in our stead to get these last things condemned. Clark, give us a roll call, please.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Cohn?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number six is discussion and possible action to adopt ordinance number 1258-2018, rezoning the property located on the southeast corner of the intersection of East Fourth Street and Kendall Avenue, from single-family dwelling District R1 to family dwelling District R2. Mr. Johnson?
We had a public hearing and a discussion about this ordinance on May 7th meeting. The narrative was you weren't here. It's a property located at the southeast corner of the intersection of Fourth Street and Kendall. There's an empty lot due east of three existing structures. And it's my understanding that the developer is primarily concerned with that empty lot for the construction of a new place. The roadway is eventually going to be widened to...
Do we have all our easements from those tracks?
From these tracks? I think so, actually. I don't want to say for certain.
I want to purchase the property. They said that the easements have already been purchased.
Oh, are you the applicant here? Oh, okay. So here to say, I would recommend we don't approve this until we...
Until we get the...
But at least the owner's in the room, and he's willing to say it publicly. So, okay, never mind.
You have that on record.
Yeah. At least that's to get a building permit.
True.
So I think we talked in length about this, about the increased traffic flow in that area. It's front, it'll be front on a three-lane road. The applicant mentioned several times about the unlikeliness that a single-family home would ever be constructed in this vacant lot. I tend to agree with him. A lot of the property in the area is rental property, except for north of Fourth Street. And that's Boone Not Court. It's one of our nicer single-family subdivisions. And so, I don't know if we have anybody here today. They were mailed out letters of notification of the last public hearing, and they said... But I haven't received any comment from anybody in the area.
Anybody like to make any comments at this time, Mr. Ward? Anyone else?
I'll just make a quick comment. I appreciate you giving me this chance to talk with the mayor and Counsel. Steve Ward on the Fourth and Kendall. My only plan is to take this R2. Fourth Street's kind of been known to have commercial one and R2 throughout with lots of rentals. Our plans for it are for R2, buy a commercial building, even though Ed was going to all slip it in there, but we are not looking at that at this point in time. And so, that's my request.
Counselors, she presented a remark from the applicant. In the staff, do you have any questions? Who would enter in a motion at this time?
I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion to approve, and a second, Counsel Hires. On the wall. Final chance for comments, questions? Same thing going up. Clark, give us a roll call, please.
Counselor Cohn?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes. Motion carried.
Item number seven, Mr. Johnson, you're going to be busy tonight, is discussion and possible action to adopt ordinance number 1259-2018, rezoning the property located on the southeast corner of the intersection of Jamestown Drive and East Allen Road, from single-family dwelling District R1 to two-family dwelling District R2. So these two, they almost look like identical images. And I was going to put these pictures on the PowerPoint. I thought it was the same thing. But the southeast corner of an intersection of a road that will eventually be a three-lane with a dedicated center turn lane. It's a minor arterial street, and a corner lot, and heavy traffic, close to the universe.
And yes, it meets the definition, according to our code book, for a lot that would be, you know, appropriate to be zoned R2. However, I did receive, you know, quite a bit of feedback from this request. Obviously, Jamestown is a nice, single-family residential area. A lot of property owners there don't want to see that change. I can respect that. And I think, if you allow, you'll probably hear some comments about that. So...
I always allow. Are you for it, Mr. Johnson?
Yep.
Would anyone like to make any comments at this time?
I have a question. Is that turquoise or teal?
Because, oh, I'm sorry.
Whatever. The color that's not...
It's R2.
That's already R2?
Across the street.
But there's no, there's some development that has happened there, right?
Not yet. It's classified as, but there's nothing there, other than, I think, one single-family home back in the woods, and then a trailer home, I believe, in front.
Is that a road that runs, like you can see where ash stops, then there's the white line?
There is a trail. Yeah, it goes back to... Back there, practically to the bypass.
So is it R2 the whole way? I mean, from...
Yeah, it might go all the way to the bypass.
Mr. Ward?
Yes, as a property owner, once again, I appreciate you letting me speak. First thing I want to do is, I want to kind of apologize. Last time I was here, I had a fight of flight instinct, and my dad's kind of took over as far as fighting, when you feel like having stones thrown at you. When I went home, though, I thought about the reaction, tried to put myself in every neighbor's position. And once again, my vision of the developments on this, and also especially the next track of land, was drastically different than the concerns that the neighbors had. And what I want to say is just, I'm sorry that I went into the human nature of taking it as a personal attack. And I understand, when I went home and actually thought about it, if I was living there, I'd probably hollered a little bit louder and asked a few more questions. So... questions, so, no hurt feelings on any, somebody that said something there. On this actual piece of property, bottom line is that it's R2 directly across the street. The other thing that was not mentioned there is that there's a house that is directly east of there that is a home that has four living quarters in it, and it's a duplex, and it is not even some residential two, and there's a duplex there. I am requesting R2 on that. Located driveway access is on Allen Road with R2 directly across, currently fit zoning of Allen Road with R3 being given to the development already, I believe it was Shepherd or Shep LLC or whatever his LLC was that he's doing up the old Reese's property. Best use of this property is R2. I don't think anybody's gonna bring, build their dream home, and especially of the two and three thousand square foot magnitude that Jamestown offers there on Allen Road. The opposition earlier, and the council considered it called it Professor's Road, and had bad side vision from Allen Road, if you'll actually pull that back up, plan if you can, as far as where that's at. That side vision has nothing to do with me, those big seaters that are on the west-hand side there at Allen Road and Jamestown, you got a point on that?
Well, I do, but I think we have anti-glare screen or something.
Okay, alright. But there, there is a bad, there is a bad spot there that is a site, a site issue that's there, but it has absolutely nothing to do with the property that's there. This house is absolutely an eyesore, in my opinion, needs to be tore down. Fear of the unknown is, I believe, the reason that the residents are not wanting it to go to... The one other thing I also did, as I spoke to the people that had concerns at the last meeting that were here, and I told them, I said, "Guys, I said, I'm not trying to create flux, if you wanna buy, purchase the property, this is what I paid for it, and you're more than welcome," and I haven't received the phone calls. So with all of that, I would ask for the rest of R2 something on that piece. And this one will be demolished and it will be probably the first project we work on.
Well, you may need to ease it up here there as well for the three-lane extension, so...
That's fine.
Okay.
And once again, we'll actually plan for that, because we knew that it was gonna end up going there.
Yeah, regardless of what happens, we'll be approaching...
Yeah, I'm sure.
And this one, I just wanna comment, 'cause this is my ward in my neighborhood and not far from where my house is, and I've lived in that neighborhood for 15 years, and I know some of the people here are my neighbors, and three weeks ago, when we had the huge crowd of people, a lot of those people are also my neighbors, and when I run down to Danos to get something, I see those people, and I've seen some of those people in the last three weeks, and they've all communicated their concerns to me. And I know the biggest fear, I think, that was expressed at the last meeting, was low-income housing and running down home values, and there's a plethora of studies, and I was able to print out a few to bring with me tonight, and I have a background in HUD and forensic work in HUD, and there's, there's a lot of data to actually contradict that, and so I think people tend to think that, that rental housing or low-income housing is a bad thing, when it's not necessarily a bad thing, it's a good thing for a lot of different reasons. But anyway, I will, with that being said, I will throw myself on the sword and make a move.
Hold on, hold on, one second, do you have a motion, is that for approval?
Yes.
Is there a second to the Councillor Long's motion?
Can I get to speak?
Hold on, hold on, hold on, you will.
I, I will have to retract that motion.
Well, the rule will work as such, if you wanna make your motion, it's one second, but we'll still have a comment period. Anyone wanna second that motion?
I'll second.
Second from Councillor Hires. And now, I think I recognize Mr. Stevens' voice behind Paul and Mr. Johnson. Come on up to the microphone.
Hi, I'm Rhonda Stevens, and I'm one of those neighbors that live in Jamestown. I think the concern, especially on our street, we do all agree that's an eyesore, and thank you for more in the yard, finally. But, you know, we haven't been told when it's changing to R2, are there, is there going to only be one duplex on it? Are you gonna put two on there? I know there's, the size of a lot is part of the determination, but that's what I would like to know. If you're gonna put two duplexes on it, that means there's at least four to eight people living there, you know, with that many vehicles. So, do you have any plans at this time, or you're just gonna bulldoze the house and...
I've got to go in with developers, if we can fit two duplexes that are correct, and we actually are interested in this stacking those houses that they did such a good job down on Vinita, because it looks very nice.
The, the cemetery road?
No, no, just as you go off College and take a left, go down to Vinita, they're on the agenda here, I believe, tonight.
Oh, it's weird, it's an avenue.
Yeah, and they did a very, very nice job at, at doing that.
I think our concern is just, there again, we've noticed all through this city of Talalaw, it's becoming duplex city. I've just been surprised the last couple of months, driving into different neighborhoods, it's like, there's another duplex, there's another duplex, and that's my fear for our neighborhood. I understand his location, even though he's saying R2's across the street, we're R1 and that lot is in R1. And the house he's talking about to the east of him, I can remember several years ago, that property owner tried to get a change to R2, and we started fighting it, and then finally they just dropped it, everybody was, one of those things like, don't ask stuff to L situations, but...
So maybe R3.
But, you know, but it's scary the thought of putting two, two duplexes there. You know, we would appreciate a privacy fence on Jamestown Street, our driver, if you do do that, but you're saying the exit's gonna be onto Allen, or the driveway will be onto Allen the way it is now and not onto Jamestown's drive?
Once again, I'm, I'm, I'm...
I think that's what scares us, we don't know, and it is the fear of the unknown, we're, it is the fear of changing our neighborhood, so we would respectfully ask, on behalf of the Jamestown addition, that you don't change Jamestown, that lot that is in Jamestown addition to R2. That's all I can hope for.
Anyone else, Tess, you had a question earlier?
Yeah, Mr. Johnson mentioned that Allen Road was going to be eventually changed into the three-lane, is that gonna affect his zoning that's currently there, or this zoning for that man?
Well, it, it wouldn't inherently, no. The, the road was just becoming a three-lane, and whatever bounds it now would bound it then, but I'm sure there'd be some people eventually repeat this process and probably do something to change at some point, but it's hard to predict who would or why or when. Mr. Johnson? Any final comments?
I'll answer your question.
Councillors, anything else before we call for roll call? Clerk gives one, please.
Councillor Hires?
Yes.
Councillor Long?
Yes.
Councillor Combs?
No.
Motion carried.
I love you, the hour, come. Yes.
We may revisit this item for a moment, only because of the technicality that rarely comes up. That may not be resemblant, or that we, I believe we're gonna need a majority of the whole body, not a majority of the quorum for ordinance. We're gonna double-check that, we'll be back in a moment, but the, the motion did carry, but it may not be sufficient to enact the ordinance, but we're gonna look into that and revisit. Item number eight is discussion and possible action to adopt ordinance number 1260-2018 rezoning the property located on the northwest corner of the intersection of First Street and Mission Avenue from single-family dwelling District R1 to multiple-family dwelling District R3. We don't...
Pointing a personal, personally.
While we're checking on this, can we maybe slip ahead about these? So that the same situation doesn't potentially arise on the next issue? I've read the item, and so what I would ask then, and we're gonna do a couple of very odd procedural things here, is this, because I believe, let me look ahead. Okay, we have a couple, several. People get busy. Okay. Yeah, let's suspend the agenda then to reconsider. Do you wanna just take a recess?
I could go to the bathroom.
Whoa, I need to maintain some semblance of order, 'cause I've got a question, I've got, hold on. Yes, ma'am, very quickly.
But it's also true that you guys have just approved the board?
Councillors, I believe we've got our lead ready technical speaking? You ready to go? Okay. I think we are ready to return from our recess, we took a little longer than our five minutes, but the time is now eight-thirty, straight up, we've been at twenty minutes, take a minute to reconvene. Some move?
Second.
Motion and second from Councillors Hires and Long. Clerk, roll call, please.
Councillor Hires?
Yes.
Councillor Long?
Yes.
Councillor Combs?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, we had a question over the passage, or, yeah, the question over the passage of item number seven, which was the ordinance number 1259-2018 rezoning property on the southeast corner of Jamestown Drive and East Allen Road. We had a motion from Councillor Long and a second from Councillor Hires and a two-to-one vote to adopt said ordinance, but me being the hyper-technical person that I am remembered very vaguely, a piece of state statute that comes from Title 11, Section, Section 14, Subsection 102. Ordinance says, "Procedure governing passage, all proposed ordinances of a municipality shall be considered at a public meeting of the council or board trustees. A vote of majority of all members of the council or board trustees shall be required for the final passage of an ordinance." So we would immediately demand a three-to-zero vote tonight with the absence of Councillor Bliss, all we had was the two-to-one, and...
So that's vote was...
Okay, so we're going on somewhere else? Okay.
They're drilling?
This has been a very unique council meeting, it's good to be back.
Should we not be in the room under this?
So the ordinance is not adopted at this time, the motion, of course, carried, but that is a result of the approval of the ordinance. So councillors, we're going to try to rectify the situation by maybe converting that vote to one at table until an instant meeting, which could be done with a motion and a second, or we can live with the ordinance not having been adopted. But because it's the same meeting, we can entertain a motion to do whatever your pleasure is at this time.
Yeah, that vote was in effect, actually, the kind of bottom line, you have to have a full majority tonight, yep.
The vote was simple.
Our motion was...
From motion, now, table and a second from Councillor Combs and Long. Clerk gives a roll call, please.
Councillor Combs?
Yes.
Councillor Long?
Yes.
Councillor Hires?
Yes.
Just for clarification purposes, the ordinance is intended and will read, will be back next Monday night for reconsideration. We, we are able to revisit items within the same meeting before we adjourn, and that's what we've chosen to do here tonight, so it'll be back on June 4th. So those of you who are here this evening for that item will have to return on June 4th, and we, we may still have a councillor missing, in all honesty. I believe Councillor Hires will have to be gone, but we will try to deal with that situation then, or we could even, if that's, that table, that table motion doesn't necessitate it being on the floor, but we're probably most likely out of time. So now, let's go ahead and move to item number eight, which is discussion of possible action to adopt ordinance number 1260-2018 rezoning the property located on the northwest corner of the intersection of First Street and Mission Avenue from single-family dwelling District R1 to multiple-family dwelling District R3. Mr. Johnson, thank you.
You weren't at the last meeting, so this is primarily for you. This is the 21-acre tract, vacant property, north of First Street, west of Mission. As I pointed out at the last meeting, staff, we identified some potential issues with the zoning request of R3. The, the density concerned us as far as traffic and drainage.
Go.
And so, we had a significant discussion here on your planning and zoning meeting, and it was determined that it would be more appropriate, and everybody, including the applicant, was good with going with R2, and planning and zoning voted unanimously to approve, recommend approving R2 for this property. This parcel has generated a lot of feedback, in my office, I've had a lot of contact from residents that live in and near the area, and their concerns are the same, the, the traffic, the drainage, and changing their single-family neighborhood. So, south of First Street is, it's, it is all, as you can tell from the map, a single-family. However, north is, is on the R2, and it's the Leon Daniel Heights Housing Edition. So after all the conversations that we had on the seventh, I thought about some win-win ideas. A lot of the concern was the fear of the unknown, as well as some legitimate concerns with traffic and drainage. We, we have a most stringent zoning classification, planned unit development, which would allow the council to review any pre-development plans that were stated. No building permit would be issued until the council reviewed the drainage, the, the lot sizes, the density that can change them. It gives the developer ultimate flexibility with council approval. So, you would require everything upfront before any building permits are issued, and you guys would bless it, our staff. And wouldn't, the developer would have the opportunity to increase densities, set back distances, it offered, the point is offering a lot of flexibility in their development. We have two that exist in the city of Talalaw. One was done for a different reason, it was private streets, we only allow private gated community and planned unit development for our code, and the other one, the, the point was to increase the density and have shared green space. And so you put the homes, the thought is you put some homes closer together, and then you have a shared green space, park areas, trails, walking paths, you can be more creative with your development. But the catch is, this body gets to approve everything before a building permit's issued. And so, that was just a thought I had, I know a lot of people are concerned, I mean, a majority of the people that are still here with us tonight are concerned about this zoning replaces. So, another thought, I spoke with Steve about this, Mr. Ward about this, you know, some of the, the north and eastern boundary of the property, maybe approving that is R2, but leaving the southwest area of the property, R1.
Councillors, do you all have any questions or comments?
Okay. There we are. How would you split up, like, the zone, I mean, does it have to be surveyed and...
Yeah, I'd have to have a legal description before it's, you know...
But like, that's not something that we could do, like, tonight, I could be like, go to the big tree and go over and...
But you could, you could probably say the eastern 10 acres, or the northern 5 acres and the eastern 5 acres, and you could get close.
Or you go all... The planned unit development's the most restrictive, and we could make that change here tonight, and we all, and we actually made the mistake of saying R1 is the most restrictive, but I guess that's technically not true.
It's not true.
Yeah, I mean, we see so few of those that we don't really think about it when we make that statement, but...
Yeah, they're heavily used in other communities, and we really only tried them on, you know, once, for the, the concept.
Would you wanna come here and ask us to approve everything? That's a trick question, you don't have, I'm not gonna...
So, a PDU...
VU.
PDU, whatever. Does that open, so they have to come here, they have to form a plan and come here and get us, and everything approved, but does that open the range of, like, ultimately what can be done?
Yeah, I mean, the idea in a lot of communities, PDU is used for mixed-use developments, and so there's a commercial element, a small commercial element, or... It, it allows the developer full creativity with your approval, is what it does.
May I speak?
Let the applicant speak, and then we'll get in some other questions. Mr. Ward?
Yeah. And once again, I've asked a lot of this, trying to figure out the best, and once again, listening to the residents, I am requesting rezoning on this mission from first R102 to R2 zone. You know, the Fourth Street has, excuse me, I'm on the first mission. On this, is there a way that you can take this back to the R3 where all that's at? Once again, we're surrounded by R2 and R3 on Mission Street, on Mission and First. First. There is a, once again, an R two development, but there's not R two on that map. To the north, there's R two. To the northwest, there's R three up at the Hill Crest, and this has been requested to be R two. Currently, the best use of the property is R two for single-family housing residents. You're not going to find somebody build fifteen, eighteen hundred, two thousand square foot home up against Leon Daniel Heights, up against what's on Mission Street, okay? It's a rundown facility. And the reason why I'm asking that on that, and also want to address the areas of concern, areas of concern and issues, as I saw it, visited with several developers, and Clint Johnson, the major issue was the flooding of the corner of First and Mission, but there's been no civil engineering to address the drainage. It is my understanding when you go into the retention pond, you have civil engineer that kind of works that, and that lane that goes in between State and Cherokee there is parter, and there's a possibility of taking some of that water flow down parter instead of it all hitting right there at First Street and Lamar back on that corner. So once again, civil and engineer is going to take a look at this thing, retention pond. There is something that was said last time about not having R two. The reason R two residents and multifamily housing residents live in town and not outdoors is they don't have transportation, guys. They don't have gas. They have the ability to walk to some of these. I've got some of these residents that are in some of my facilities, and once again, it's facilities that I rent for six hundred and fifty, seven hundred dollars a month, but they don't have the ability to go out and do that. I realize that traffic concerns are valid, especially when we've had the Fourth Street shut down and route through Elons and First. This neighborhood has been very, very blessed for many, many years to have an undeveloped large tract of land in close proximity that they don't have a lot of things. They can enjoy the wildlife that's there. But developments of these parcels of town is still progress, and denying that is denying progress, and you're asking it to go outside of the city limits. If you want to push it outside there, I don't think that really helps the backspace. Now, to leave the property as is, my, for me, it's not an option, and this is just where I'm going to go. An individual landowner does have the rights, as long as they don't impede, infringe on any neighbor's property or their rights. The investment that's made in this property has a yearly cost associated with it, about fifteen thousand between taxes and interest. That's not for pity, that's just stating the fact that why that property will be developed at some point in time. If the property is not rezoned for R two, my plans is to go back and put it on the open market. That property's set for over five years there, and everybody had the ability to buy. I'll remind the neighborhood that an R one zoning means that a developer can build what they want, as long as it's single-family housing. A lot of times, you don't necessarily want seventy-five thousand to ninety-five thousand dollar single-family developments in your neighborhood. I just ask, is that what you want in your community? I will not be the one developing those. I'm more, I'm proud of my community than doing that. I'm asking for R two. If I don't, that's fine. It'll be R one, but we'll make sure and go ahead and go through and do the retention pond, but then those plots are going to be sold off to developers that can do whatever they want with R one. So I'm asking for an R two rating on this property. I'm supposed to claim on that special use, and like I told him, I said, "This process for property that is surrounded and anything that I look at doing in my mind seems very, very positive to the property. I think it's valid to ask for R two on that." So, thank you.
Sir? One more. Did you have a comment?
Well, I really wanted to just ask, the PUD that you all have approved in the past was that located?
It was one on, it's north of Markoma, of Cherokee Nation's Gymnasium, off of Fourth Street.
And what did they develop there?
Homes, single-family homes. They're just more densely.
So, we're all here again. I think the ideal situation, as I said before, would be a park. I spoke with Mr. Worth today. So we are just asking, what I would like for you all to consider at this point is, if we can raise half of the funding, three hundred and forty thousand dollars for twenty-one acres, it'd be a whole lot better for the community if this could be a park than an R one, an R two, or a PUD.
Can you give me that figure again?
Three hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Dana, let me back that up. That is not, that is not the price of that. That's a...
That's what we talked about.
Three ninety, twenty, twenty-one acres, it's three ninety-nine is what the sale price was.
You told me you had an offer for three forty, and if we could come up with that three forty, you would honor that offer?
No, I said somebody offered that.
Right.
But I didn't take it. No, she's, one ninety-nine, one ninety-nine was that. I had it for, I had it for three forty. If the city, and once again...
As a park, not a city.
No, this is actually better for y'all. If the city wants to come up with two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and I sell portions of that at current market rate and get back, I'll do it for two hundred and fifty thousand, but they need to raise that. That's better than what you're talking about. I'm not looking to hit a home run here, but I also need to be paid back for the interest of things that I've got in it. The tax break can possibly help me, and I think you understand how that can happen on the board members. If they want to do something like that...
What are you talking about, this sellback?
She had actually talked about Cherokee Nation, and I visited with her. I said, "I have no immediate needs for that, but to go through this process and not have it done if something falls through." You know, I know what I'm going to do with it, and it's, I mean, I can't imagine anything not being R two. And once again, there's lots of good single-family housing that is in the south area that the lane of the Second Street.
Well, I think you can tell by looking at the map that it's clearly more R one than it is R anything else. So if majority wins, then it stays R one.
Well, we are drifting from the topic, so...
Right.
We don't want to negotiate it in public, but a park is your suggestion?
I would love a twenty-one acre park, and we are willing to go out and raise part of the funding.
I'd like to table this right now, and with more conversation with Steve and the city.
Okay. And a motion to table from Counselor Combs is their second?
Second.
Second from Counselor Long. Clerk, give us a roll call, please.
Counselor Long? Yes. Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Item is tabled. We will bring it back at the meeting very soon, and I am certainly, in a lot of ways, I'm glad Counselor Bliss isn't here, because he'd heard those amounts, he'd have had aneurysm over there, and probably start spinning conspiracy theories by now, but we'll go on to item number nine, which is discussion of possible actions to adopt ordinance number twelve sixty-one two thousand eighteen rezoning property located near the southwest corner of the intersection of Chop Town Street and West Avenue, single-family dwelling district R one to general commercial district C two. Johnson? No, amounts, amounts. Not elements or anything like that? Mr. Johnson?
So, again, this is the second reading of this ordinance, and it's probably more for your benefit than for the others.
Clerk, hold on, hold on, hold on. We'll let everybody who's interested exit the room here really quickly first. If we're wanting to have some conversations over that last item, let's try to have those outside as we could, please. It's good enough for the moment, so go ahead, and we'll see if it continues to be that way.
This property is just north of that property. It's northwest frontage, but the idea is, what I understand from the developer, is to acquire more frontage on Chop Town. You can see to the east of their access road or their access property. It's for you, Jake. They've all heard this.
I can multitask.
I know what it is. Is to have that commercial access from Chop Town. There are several properties currently available for purchase. I know that has been a discussion with adding additional properties to this whole piece. I didn't get much feedback from this request. Chop Town, please. C two request, that typically brings everybody out. So...
I could grin a lot, because you and I have been through a lot of these things, and we know who's going to turn out in what region for what zoning. You can almost predict it, so somewhat surprised when you don't come back.
I was surprised.
Yeah.
You know, I think if the applicant's successful on acquiring more frontage property on Chop Town, it would make for a good commercial development in that area. You can see the black box that's on the map, that's TGWA's new office, and so that was an area identified by Crafton Tall, our comprehensive planning consultant, of an area that lacked that commercial center, and they looked to the city to facilitate the construction of that more commercial center and a park desert. There's a lot of parks there in that area, as well as south towards the First Mission property from the last discussion. And so the accessibility, if it's improved up to Chop Town, it would fit our ordinance. West is probably not built to our city standards, so it's probably not...
That's a surprise.
Recommended for heavy commercial access, Chop Town is, and so I think if there's a successful acquisition or two, it would be suitable for commercial development.
We're not real careful. Steve's going to help us put the parks where you and I talked about over the years, having those little neighborhoods that are pocket parks or whatever.
If we just make them all PUD, you guys couldn't expect that to happen.
Where does this, based on this map, come down from Chop Town into that? Well, like, which one of the, is it between...
Yeah, that's what you said.
Is it the green, wasn't it say the green roof?
Green roof, right.
And that building next to it?
Yep.
Is that where it comes down?
It's from the back of Jay Young's building to this fence line.
Right.
All the way up here is that section. This is Jay Young's. This is a set of very small homes that are pretty rough. Saying actually good words about it. This right here is actually a commercial piece already. You got your production center.
So right there.
And yeah, here's the access, the access that we have, that we own personally.
So there's nothing really there. I mean, it's just open.
It's got one old house there that needs to be devised.
Okay, so that's why I've driven down Chop Town, looked, tried to figure out where that comes down.
Or an opening is.
But I didn't think anything was there. I was like, there's no like stretch that doesn't have anything there, but I know Zanate Pay.
It directly sits behind Jay Young's old shop. Did join that.
I cannot get where it came, it connected from Chop Town into that big stretch of land, but now I don't understand.
I think without that access, the staff's recommendation would not be...
There's also livestock over there. Is it, I mean, not that has anything to do with this commercial request, but...
There is no...
Have you noticed there's like livestock?
There's nothing, nothing illegal about that. You just can't have a bull. No bulls. No bulls or jacks.
It's just like a little... I would make a motion to approve.
Okay, thank you. It's moved to approve the motions or the ordinance. I'm sorry. Second from Counselor Combs. Any other questions or comments? I want. Is demolished a word?
Demolish.
There we are. I just didn't know. I was trying to really run through my role, but demolished, all right, we'll go with that. All right. Clerk, give us a roll call, please.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Motion carried.
You again, sir. Item number ten, discussion of possible actions to adopt ordinance number twelve sixty-two dash two thousand eighteen rezoning property located near southwest corner of the intersection of Seminary Avenue and Benita Avenue from single-family dwelling district R one to multifamily dwelling district R three.
So, this developer of our city properties, they are about to finish up a development. I wish, I hate to have that corner, that would have been a little handy. So we see that R three, where Benita is, to the northwest, they demolished that and have built a two-story duplex, I believe. Mr. Worth was appreciating that development as first as ever. And they're looking to do the same thing here. That's kind of their thing at Varsity Properties. So they find university towns, and they build student housing. It's a model based off of a dorm room style. They have six living units downstairs and six living units upstairs. There's one unit, you know, one family up, one family down, and that's their intention for this same property. It's adjacent to, it's right across the street from Northeastern State University's Science Building and probably the newest parking lot. No? Grand Avenue. It's probably the newest, yeah, parking lot. Second.
I would entertain a motion or questions or comments from the council.
Talk about this.
I have any negative feedback about this.
Is the applicant here?
They're not making, not making. They obviously don't live in that.
Counselors, what's your pleasure? Is there a second? Counselor Combs' motion to approve? Second, or Counselor Long and Chief Adams?
Is that, that show you would be just like the one there off of Benita?
That would be an assumption.
I'm just kind of curious, because you say one family up, one family down, the other one has like five rooms.
Six. Six downstairs, six upstairs.
Four doors where it just has a common living room and a common kitchen, so more dormitory style.
But the other one, well, it's on R three, so it could be apartment. Mr. Uso, did you have a comment?
Oh, I just wanted to know who the applicant was.
It was Varsity Properties LLC.
I'm sorry.
Varsity Properties LLC.
Oh, okay.
Any other questions or comments before I can tell my allergies, have decided to suddenly start? Clerk, give us a roll call, please.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Thank you all. Good night. You're done. Possible action to approve a school resource officer contract between the city of Tallawea. I told the schools this year nineteen, she came to be here tonight. It looks like it's essentially the same contract that we always approved, with the exception of the officers that we had during two thousand seventeen meetings.
Just be clear, counsel, too, we've submitted a variety of language that you got there.
Oh, good.
Tamil? Yes.
Oh, you have it, you have it. Basically, to make it match the previous provisions, the way they're splitting the cost, but it's on the salary. But that's the language it does, like the chemicals there for? Especially in, yeah, I think it's, that is what was there for the previous decade.
Now, does that one have the language where the council approves the job description?
No.
Wasn't that something we discussed before as being a requirement?
I'm not that aware.
I thought...
You had mentioned that in the comment that I saw, the responses that you guys can, that would be that a worry on this particular situation, because it's a mutual...
We just marked through it, we didn't need to change it.
And made it reflect the seven opposite.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, and I think also for the prior contract has that same language, also the job.
Motion to approve from Counselor Combs is their second?
Second.
Second from Counselor Hires. Any other questions or comments? Clerk, hold on.
Counselor Long?
Councilor Long?
Yes.
Councilor Combs?
Yes.
Councilor Hires?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number 12 is discussion of possible action to approve a K9 contract between the city of Telequa and Telequa Public Schools. She can't get to be here, but it is, I believe, with my knowledge, unless someone's correcting the exact same contract, for my sure, with different base.
Well, this one didn't change at all, from my knowledge.
We added a word term in there, just to clarify.
You had to prove me wrong. They had a word term.
Term.
Didn't fundamentally change the area.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Clerk, give us a roll call, please.
Councilor Combs?
Yes.
Councilor Hires?
Yes.
Councilor Long?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item, oh, okay, no, this is that one. Item number 13 is discussion of possible action to request surplus funds from the 2009 bond issue from the Telequa Public Works Authority. Just for purposes of examination for everybody in the crowd, councilors, which you are aware of this, there was a bond issue passed in 2009 and it ends up over collecting compared to what's required for the debt service. For, I think, three times in the past five years or so, we have requested those surplus funds to be put into projects and things. And we've had it in last year's budget, we want to put it in this year's budget as well. But they wanted a set of amendments where you all might approve the request for transfer of revenue, just a letter from me. So it's kind of pro forma, and we've done it for several times over the years, but we're just bringing it to you this time based upon TGWA's request.
So do we have a plan specifically on what this money will be used for?
In the past, we would typically informally earmark it, even though not really, but it just adds about $700,000 to our fund balance carryover and allows us to do things like inclusive playgrounds and things we otherwise wouldn't be able to do. But it goes into the general fund.
Just to comment something that, that I would appreciate is just to know kind of like what that, that plan would be for those revenues. And I know we'll probably find out more when we get in number 14, we talked about the presentation this year, that's it.
Well, you'll just get these documents tonight and you'll see those plans. And last year, you have got those plans already. You all approved this revenue to be received, we just haven't made the request and we need to do that before the end of the fiscal year. Counselor, motion to approve from Councilor Combs, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Councilor Hires. Are there any other questions or comments? Clerk, hold a roll.
No. Who make a motion?
Uh, Combs.
And second?
Hires. Oh, yes, ma'am.
If you can, how much you're requesting?
It's $700,000. I'm trying, I'm trying to remember. There might be a little change added onto that, because we want to take it down to a round figure, but it's either 700 or 700 and a little bit change, but we won't take it below what's required for two full payments of the principal. Mr. Uso?
Yes, when I went to, for the needs, I meant that, I guess it's a bond salesman or something like that, Telequa Public Works, that are going to issue some kind of bonds for something. Not quite sure what they are, because I read something, something which in the paper.
I think that'll be here next week.
What, me?
That'll be here next week. That'll be on the agenda on the.
Oh, okay, well, I had the fellow that came up here and they, they continued it and I was just wondering if they had any surpluses, they attempted to borrow my money.
This is the city's money that they are just acting in the past through for on us? It's not, it's not their funds.
Okay, thank you for sharing that.
Sure, sorry. I probably should have included that in my original explanation. Any other questions? Roll call for this clerk.
Councilor Hires?
Yes.
Councilor Long?
No.
Councilor Combs?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number 14 is the presentation of the proposed fiscal year 2018, 2019 Telequa City Budget. We've got a box, Mr. Carr, can you help me with those, please? Every year, we have to go through a statutorily mandated and common sense kind of process that makes us lay a roadmap for the upcoming fiscal year. This will be my seventh time through the process and I normally read in the entirety my, my budget message that I am required to create by law. Let me see, I feel like I'll give a little bit of off-the-top kind of explanation while these documents are being distributed. But it's a lot of work. We go through a very long, arduous process and this year it was particularly complex and I can't say nothing about Mr. Carr and Ms. Curtis and even a few other people who for the very first time, first second, but for a lot of people, their very first time through this process. It is a $13 million general fund. When you add everything up, I'm doing the math on the fly, I think it's somewhere around $30 million when you take into account all the other funds and things like that. But the general fund itself is about $13 million worth of expenditures, at least their plan. And Doug, it's a little less than that because we, we don't totally drain the fund balance carryover. But we put a lot of work, weeks worth of work into this, meeting after meeting, and texts and phone calls and post-meeting meetings and everything else, try to make everything work. We estimate revenues, we try to gather a list of expenses from the various department heads and try to make those balanced. We actually had a couple of, we've almost practically reinvented this process from the ground up this year. Felt really, really good about the numbers and then alternatively, we feel real bad and we act again and we finally ended up, I think, putting together a document that, again, as required by law, is balanced and hopefully reflects, and this is a phrase I use at the end of my message, reflects the needs and hopes of people in the community. I will go ahead, now that everybody's got a copy, and read this into the record as I do each year. Starts with the Telequa City Councilors. As is required by the laws of the state of Oklahoma, this budget proposal is being submitted to you for your consideration. As part of the process that we complete on an annual basis, this document has been produced after lengthy, detailed conversations with the city department heads, finance director and city administrator. In those conversations, many factors, variables and perspectives were considered. Public input on the needs and desires of the community, the practical considerations of the department heads and ultimately, the financial environment in which the city of Telequa operates, all influenced the development of this roadmap that will guide the city of Telequa during the next fiscal year. Please take note of this excerpt from last year's budget message. The citizens of Telequa have become increasingly aware that their community is changing rapidly. Perhaps just as important, they are aware of how that, how the pace of the community's evolution is quickening. There have been many people, groups and organizations that have gone to great lengths to inform and educate the people of Telequa and the surrounding area of the impending changes. Our community partner, Cherokee Nation, has undertaken economic development efforts and initiated projects of such scale that they are unprecedented in Telequa's history, uncompleted and even to a degree during their development and construction. The economic impact of those ventures will transform Telequa, bringing in new jobs, residents and visitors. That part of last year's message still applies to Telequa, the pace of change in the community and the likelihood that it will continue into the immediate future. During that previous budget cycle, the city aggressively budgeted for a series of capital improvement projects, public safety enhancements and other investments with the intention of improving our essential services, infrastructure and quality of life offerings so that as more than $250 million of economic development takes place in Telequa, we are prepared for and promote the population growth that comes along with it. We have a section here titled fiscal year 2017-18 accomplishments. In anticipation of the growth, the city undertook the creation of a comprehensive plan for Telequa. This plan will help direct the growth of the community over the next two decades. Though the process started in fiscal year 2016-17, much of the work was, took place last year as well. After months of community meetings, discussions with city officials, conversations with our community partners and the accumulation and analysis of enormous amounts of technical data and information, final draft of that plan will be submitted to the council before the end of the current fiscal year. We also had an escape park that was constructed near Chautauqua Street. The completion of this alongside after project has created a space that's safe and filled with activity. Before the park was completed, the area where it sits was the origin of many complaints and reports of vandalism, fighting and other disagreeable activities. While there still are some operational aspects that still need to be resolved, such as illegal parking near the new facility, it has already become one of the more popular destinations in our park system. Through the hard work of a leadership Telequa class, construction began on an inclusive playground at the Antis Brandon Sports Complex. These types of facilities are not common and Telequa will have one of the few within the surrounding area. Fundraising efforts of the leadership class made the project more than it could have ever hoped to be if only city funds had been used. This is another project that spanned more than a single budget year of 2017-18, but it is nearing completion and the facility should become usable in the near, usable near the end of the fiscal year. Finally, it is a pleasure to report that the city of Telequa began its portion of the construction of two different street projects during fiscal year 2017-18. Love Avenue and West Fourth Street. Representing approximately $4 million in infrastructure investment, the result of these projects will be that two of Telequa's entirely traveled streets will have been improved or expanded to better and more safely accommodate the traffic they carry and the increased traffic that they will see as the community grows. These projects are the largest and most complicated that the city of Telequa has ever undertaken. The city as an institution and the community at large has had to adjust and adapt to their sheer size and complexity. Starting with the utility companies that began moving their lines, pipes and poles nearly two years ago, driving on those streets has not been convenient. We did what we could to prepare the public for the inevitable detours and other things that come along with construction of this sort, but because the size and scope of the projects were unprecedented in our history, so were the inconveniences and their duration. However, the bulk of the construction that created the inconveniences is nearly complete and the driveways should take shape soon. We're proud of the work that has been done on these projects and truly believe that the finished product of new sidewalks and safe, smooth, durable streets will make the recent hassles, soon make the recent hassles a distant memory. Our revenues and estimates. Danny Curtis, the city's new finance director, has done phenomenal work during the development of this budget document. It is our first time through this cycle and Mr. Carr's second. Any of this document would not have come together without nearly Herculean levels of effort on the part of those two. Their guidance and advice were indispensable in this process, including the estimates of revenues for the upcoming year. Again, we've chosen to be conservative in our estimates and not substantially increase the projections for our sales tax figures. And councilors, if I could interject momentarily, I don't believe we increased them at all. I think when I wrote this, we talked about it and I ultimately decided not to do that. We've also chosen not to increase the projections for any other substantial revenue sources. Our confidence remains high that Telequa will continue to see economic growth and expansion, particularly considering the contributions by the Cherokee Nation to our local economy outlined above. However, we were able to, able to fund enough projects and proposals to fill out a fiscal year without increasing our projections and estimates for the most recent, for contributing for most revenue sources. And finally, just a bit of a heads up here about some format changes. Due to the staffing changes I alluded to earlier, this year's budget may have slight formatting changes compared to previous years. I've given city administrator and finance directors discretion in the presentation of the data and information, so long as all accounting rules, state statutes and other regulations are met. The information presented should remain largely unchanged, however, the presentation may differ from previous documents. City administrator will be able to provide you with answers to any questions that may arise due to those changes. And here are some future recommendations for this year and next year. Please take note of the capital improvement fund in this year's proposal. It contains some changes that may help simplify and streamline abuse and reporting on that fund and balance and that of its various accounts. Over the years, there have been many line items created, though most of them are needed and still serve a vital function, others have sat stagnant for years, often with low balances. The projects and purchases tied to those accounts have been completed and there is no anticipated future use for the varying amounts of funding still sitting in those accounts. For those anticipated, for, excuse me, I know it's for the chart here, for this reason, among a few others, this proposal contains a list of consolidated accounts. The intent is to use the sum of those remaining, usually relatively low balances, to more easily achieve the goals laid out by the department heads and city council. And though we did not approach the situation this year, we are looking to eliminate a small number of separate funds and believe that should be a part of the 2019 and 20 budget development cycle. We didn't feel we had the necessary amount of time to devote the research and consideration of those eliminations this year to examples of such funds that might be good targets for being eliminated and having their funds put back into the general fund might be the Winter Wonderland Fund and Brookside Improvement Fund. Again, without further consideration, it is not possible to know whether that is truly advisable, prudent or possible, but would also help to achieve a goal of simplifying the budgets and, excuse me, simplifying budgets that the city uses to accomplish its goals. To be very clear, this would not be an elimination of funding for any particular project or endeavor, simply a different way to account for those funds and expenditures. And it is a recommendation that will wait until at least the next fiscal year to fully consider. But I did feel it was worth concluding as a future possibility in this budget. In conclusion, although it is a laborious process, I have enjoyed my seventh opportunity to create a budget for the city of Telequa. The city staff is what makes what could otherwise be an honorous procedure into one that is enjoyable. It is my hope that this document reflects the hopes and dreams of each of councilors, city department heads and the public at large. We can't fulfill every wish or desire due to the financial limits that every institution faces, but once again, there was a sincere purpose to fund every request possible which the city staff feels will lead to improvements in Telequa and that will make it a cleaner, safer, attractive and prosperous community. The end of that little tradition there, that was longer winded than I even thought it might be, but I thought it was a shorter budget message than normal, reading it out loud and meant it's a little longer. If you haven't had time to digest this document, please take it with you. You've got six days to bring it back next Monday, we can answer any questions then. If you don't have any, we can adopt. And what I always try to tell everyone too is that we can go all the way to the 18th, not really any pressure, but by the 18th, if we haven't gotten a few things resolved, please remember that it can be adopted and altered after July 1st. It's just a document, a roadmap, a guide and can be altered at your leisure after the beginning of the fiscal year. But we do have some deadlines we need to meet and that is submission of this budget to the state auditor and inspector. Seven days, is it seven or 10? Please don't, don't hold it one of the, it's one of the two, before the start of fiscal and that would be June 23rd, I believe, so. You have it before you, that's a few days later than normal, we pushed the meeting back a little bit, but we still have plenty of time for considerations, so. Unless you have any questions, which would be actually phenomenal case of speed reading right now, we can wait till fourth and answer them then. Seeing none, we can move on then to item number 15, which is, this is where I wanted to actually ask the council's flexibility. If you'll take a note from item 15 through item number 22, these are all hires for people in the various departments, a lot of seasonal, summer help. Unless there's an objection, I would like to consider all of those hires total and are all together. If it's a single motion, and of course, if you see anything in there that you would not like to include in that basically almost slightly different version of consent agenda, please let us know and we can remove that from consideration, but otherwise, items 15 through 22, I'd ask to be considered as a single item.
How do we make that motion to?
Each of those items? Okay, we have a motion, hire, and all the people listed on items 15 through 22, is there a second? Second, from Councilor Combs, and I need to ask, this is a point of order, do I need to read those? I know in the past, when we've done this, it's, I've been told I need to read them. Okay. For the public's, seeing the public here, I will read the items and then we will, we want to vote. Item 15 was to hire Aaron Lewis as a full-time collector in the solid waste department. Item 16 was to hire Conner as a part-time collector in the solid waste department. Item 17 was to hire Kristen Berry in Charlie Snell's lifeguard in the recreation department. Item 18 was to hire Luke Green and Ryan Davis as part-time laborers, 999-hour part-time laborers in the rec department. Item 19 is to hire Jessica Simpson and Madison, Madison Sarat as 552-hour workers in the rec department. Item 20 is to promote Neely Farrell from a lifeguard to the head lifeguard in the recreation department. Item 21 is to hire Austin Davis as a part-time 999-hour laborer in the street department. Item 22 is to hire Devon Feather Tree as a part-time 999-hour laborer in the parks department. Again, if there aren't any objections, we'll take a roll call on that motion and second.
Councilor Combs?
Yes.
Councilor Hires?
Yes.
Councilor Long?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, that should save us a little bit of time there and we'll go to item number 23, which is discussion and possible action to approve the rental and operating policy for Brookside Army Municipal Center and Norris Park. Carr?
Everybody get the copy of the red line changes? Brookside, it's page 39, 42, AMC is 44 and 77, and Norris Park is 51 and 55. Did everybody get the copies?
substantial changes that came were, I think, based on the introduction of, almost the vault rate for people using them frequently, is that correct?
Right.
And more clarification. Do clarify the catch. Councilors, did you all have any questions on those items? I think Councilor Long had sent us some small corrections that we had made. There were a few we didn't change, because they were subjected, I think, to questions on, I think, the security, you know, way to security and that kind of thing.
Yeah, well, some of those were just, just curiosity, but some of those, I was just looking for the consistency between the documents. And I know there was a red line one that we emailed last week, I think, and we were given a, a new red line one when we arrived from the height.
Correct. Did anybody see the pictures of?
Yes, well.
Everybody should have the copy.
The pages that had, I think, my pages got.
Well, we got 42, 47 and 55. Well, we got 42, 47, and 55.
Those are the pages that changed, so those were the...
So we just got the pages that had changes.
Changes.
So we didn't get a new, complete document with the revisions.
Right. Trying to save a tree. So the other page that we have in the book, this is just actually the changes where it changed. If it didn't change, I can give you another copy.
So these are the only two incorporated changes.
47, 3, accurate. Is that what you said, Steve?
42, 47, and 55.
Okay. I have a question.
Sure.
Just out of curiosity, how much does Brookside house give it rent out?
I can't give you an answer to that question.
Brookside is, for $40, it's for one to four hours. Anything after that, if you're going to do it for 40 or four hours plus, it's $65.
But how often?
But how often, like once a month?
Who's the Brooklyn Club?
I know the garden club uses it pretty consistently, and it seemed like there was a bridge club or something for a while. I know I rented it for some other things recently as well.
Where's the... What page off the top of your head is the projected revenue of the budget? Do you have any notes out of that?
I don't even know if it would be in there. Yeah, I mean, it has a separate line. Just clarify that for the shooter's hope.
He's going to bust out the fruit.
Yeah, exactly. I think it's all under rental in the... Well, might be listed as AMC rental, I might have to look.
It has its own account.
Does it?
It's one that you...
Well, it has its own fund. The rental income comes back into the general. I mean, is Daniel here, maybe he should correct me on that? But I'm like 95% certain of that.
Well, I mean, I guess we're off topic, as it looks like. It has nothing to do with the level of rent. I just wondered. It seems the... It seems like a very reasonable rental, but I don't have a...
It used to be $5.
Rented out, did you know?
I rented it recently, for... No, not that long.
No, it went to 40, I believe, yeah. And you should have heard the... His bloody murder one week. Wait a minute, $5 doesn't even seem worth collecting.
Can I say something?
No, 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 sit down. I'm kidding.
A lot of the... Our local nonprofits utilize this facility. I'm thinking of the municipal...
The Brookside?
Armory Municipal Center. And so I want you to consider, we have it worded where it's once per month for six consecutive months. I want you to consider six times in six months, because they might rent it more than once in a month, and I think they need to be rewarded for that. And they might rent it twice this month, none the next month, twice the next month. You see what I'm saying? And I would like to receive that benefit of a regular renter.
So instead of having...
You might get somebody that's going to rent it for a week, just break it up into individual days, so you get discount.
Yep. I thought we had more than that.
Why not?
Because there's people that say, "Well, I just rented it for six days," and then they want their discount.
I'd say that's still probably big money.
It's not a consecutive renter.
We're not in it to make a profit. There's a few and far between facilities for these nonprofits to...
That'd be nice, so at least keep our head above water.
There's a balance to be struck between the nonprofit need and the taxpayers. We can't just give things out for free. The balance has to be struck. And I'm not even saying yes or no to what you said.
Sure. I understand. Speaking of a language in there that says a rental must be more than one apartment.
It's almost common sense. I mean, like, no.
But that way, if they rent it for a week, it's not... That counts as one rental.
Continuous rental with continuous rentals.
Thinking about like, I don't know why, but for some reason...
Thank you for the consideration.
Like a hotel room, you know? Like it says a stay is one every continuous night is like counted as a stay, but not like four individual nights.
That's kind of the way we have it worded. One or more days per month for a minimum of 12 consecutive months, you'll see 50%. And then one or more days per month for a minimum of six consecutive, 25%.
Mr. Yeridiv, come. Somebody make one.
What's the three even point that you'll be having in terms of what the operating costs are for, so we have, you know, some idea to be...
Well, we're talking about three different facilities, and for the AMC, on a sheer utility basis, it would be around $27,000. If you start taking into account labor and maintenance, I mean, we could probably get you a quick figure on the labor, but when it comes to maintenance, that varies from year to year, and I'd have to probably do a little research to tell you. But at least $27,000 just to keep the lights on.
But the utilities affected in there also?
That's part of the life, you know, yes, sir.
One thing we... I attended, is Brookside, that house over there. I had a hard time finding it. I had no idea. Had a meeting over there, and I asked a number of people where it was. I was unaware of it, but it's really a nice facility. Once you're inside of it, so... But I'm dealing with a lot of the nonprofits, so there's so many limited resources, like just being in a nice environment and be able to expand their membership, so...
We've been very glad to be able to offer that.
Thank you.
Where is it that you're talking about? Where does it say toward the tail end of the agreement, right? Am I just on this?
Find it in my...
Okay. This. One or more days per month for a minimum of six consecutive months. Individuals are great, wanting more days per month.
I think it's really, really difficult to cite nonprofits as the reason for doing something that goes through our last turn and kind of snack us around for bringing that up. I mean, we can't differentiate. I mean, we had to remove certain language because of, you had nonprofit profit in it and had a kind of a matrix, and state law prevents us from being able to make that kind of consideration.
The nonprofits, they receive funds from places, grants, whatever. They just have to show that they spend it. Am I outlying thinking that?
Like it's broadly true.
With IRS, they just have to show that they're spending their money.
Or the grant... Or the granting agency, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, a lot of the... Some of these groups aren't even nonprofits. They're not a file of 163. They're a community coalition group of people coming together. They might not have any fiduciary responsibility whatsoever.
They can't even afford the application, get a termination letter, I could assure you of that.
I'm just being the hyper-technical guy based upon what a previous city attorney had told us, so, I mean, I don't care. I mean, that's too...
But do care.
I care, but, right.
I think we need to just have something listed like this, and then for the community coalitions, you know, leave it open for negotiation.
Well, they can always bring it up, just like the farmer's market did.
Exactly. One-on-one rental agreement, you guys knew what you want, you provided the advice you want, but, you know, I think the way it's listed today is very clear and very fair. It's taking care of the needs of the city and the applicant, and if they're reoccurring, they get a discount.
You get profit, nonprofit, it doesn't matter, private individual.
That way, there's no bias in the potential. I understand what Clint's saying, but if they're going to be a reoccurring user, so to speak, then they can hopefully do that for six months and get a discount.
What if? So here is... Okay, so I've been reading this. So what if we said a 25% discount from the standard fee, schedule rate, rental rate is available to individuals or groups who rent center facilities one or more days per month for a minimum of six months? Just take out the term consecutive. So that means if I come in and give you an application, and I rent, and my application is six months' worth of rentals, even if I do it every other week, or every other month for 12... For 12 months, I'm still following the... I'm in within the six-month window, but I'm not consecutive months. Or if I come in and give you, and then do it on the same line next one, instead of don't say 12 consecutive months, say 12 months. I don't know if it's fact to be hard to get out of, because 12 months is a year.
There's just double the details on that. You might have somebody that's trying to tag rentals for five years and try to suggest it's...
Well, you can't, because according to the policy, you can only rent it 12 months from the day you're trying to rent it. You can't go out.
Yeah, but they'll say, "Oh, I rented it last year on this date." That's one...
They'd have to be giving us their...
All of one application is what you're suggesting.
All their dates of meetings and stuff, and say, "Well, this is... It's a total of six months, but they're not consecutive," or so. They would just have to prove it.
And if they want to get a discount, it would be worth it to them to turn that, you know, Drew, back here.
Coalition.
Which coalition is in?
Best and Cherokee County Community Health.
Okay, so we've got a couple of coalitions in mind, then, is that suggestion? Is that what you're saying?
Absolutely.
Okay. Well, I'm going to pick on Drew, because he's in the room. So say Main Street to get the 12, the 25% discount, says, "These are my meeting," you know, knowing that they get a 25% discount if they plan ahead, came in and said, "These are my meeting dates. I'm meeting at least once a month for six months, but maybe not six consecutive months. I'm meeting in June, July, August, October, November, December."
So what I hear you saying is basically modify that 25% to the six months can be anytime within one year. Is that what you're saying?
Those six months.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Whatever you do, I hope you make it clear, because I'm the one that always ends up getting appealed to for something, and I'm the one that has to go, "I don't really know what it says, because they acted around the meeting."
Well, it has to make sense.
Okay. Fair point. I just get to be the bad guy all the time, and...
When they were to reword it, so it's six times in six months and 12 times in a year? So if somebody rents it six days in one month, they get a 25% discount?
There's no reason that would make sense.
I think that falls out of the realm of if you do that, I think, I would pick me because I...
How would we? No, I don't think it would be like six times in one month. I mean, I think they would have to show that they're renting it, you know, every other month for a year.
The idea was try to control it in a one-year period. So if somebody said, "For these three months, I'm going to rent it six times," they get their 25%. Then three months later, they rent it six times and get another 25%. And the next three months, they rent it six times and get another 25%.
No.
They just keep...
I'm good with this. I'm good with this as is. I mean, I'd like to revisit it, so I would be fine passing it and then working out the language and maybe coming back.
Yeah, you can revisit it anytime you want, but you can't do it.
Well, I mean, since we're going to meet again in a week, I would suggest that we put the language together so we can look at it, and we wanted to complete document. I mean, we're going to see each other in two more days, so...
I'm going to do your...
Well, we can all go with you.
Come on.
My niece graduated, call them. Our high school motion table.
Yeah, I don't know if they're going, but try. I'd happily make a motion to table until next Monday.
Anything that would need to be corrected and worded tomorrow by noon for the supporting documents?
The sound of the verdict, how you want it worded, and I'll have it on there.
The supporting documents for your council's hack is trying to be in by noon tomorrow.
I have a motion to table. Do I have a second? Is there a second to the motion to table?
Is there a motion?
Yeah, second to the motion to table. Hearing none, the motion to table dies, and Mr. Haylon.
I just, on page 55, I don't... What, were there any changes made to Norris Park?
Yeah. Want to see a copy of it?
Yeah. The only thing I would like to maybe use against for consideration is at the top, when talking about the shelter, park areas, facility, small pavilion, pavilion, is if we could get rid of the restricted time and be flexible. It just saves for six hours.
The reason we have that is so, if you look at there, divided in equal blocks. Well, if you just pick, let's say, six hours, and you pick it between, you could actually take two blocks of time. If somebody wanted to rent it, they'd lose it, and what would happen to Farmer's Market if you did that? The reason they're equal blocks is so that you can rent them out in equal blocks, rather than just saying, "In the middle of this block, in the middle of this block, that's the six hours I want to use."
It was based on existing use, you're saying?
Well, okay, pavilion, maybe, but the park rental, I mean, I don't think, I mean, we're probably renting the park more than anybody, and it just, I mean, these times don't fit with the things we need, so if we could be flexible on those times. I mean, I don't think somebody's going to...
I've told Jamie, there is a little flexibility. Like, if you go an hour over, two hours over, it's probably going to work out as long as there's nothing scheduled. If there's nothing scheduled and you go over, it, you know...
Well, here's my concern, for movies in the park, 7:00 to midnight, I mean, our setup time to get everything in, you know, 6:00 to 11:00 works. 7:00 to midnight doesn't really work. And this would, by giving us flexibility, I mean, it cuts us down. Now, we're just renting the gazebo in the park area. That's all we'd have to rent for that time. So now we're down to $75, instead of almost being forced to rent the whole, rent it for the whole day, so we're covered for $200. You know what I'm saying?
So if you use a little bit of flexibility on it, have you talked to Jamie? I mean, if you're an hour early and an hour late, and nobody else is lined up for it, it's not going to...
Okay, okay. As long as we're good there.
We can make that happen.
I like it.
I get what you're saying. I get what he's saying. I think it's hard to schedule. I think I get what you're saying, too.
Well, in ours, I mean, we don't have, we have every bit of ours.
As long as you have your schedule in ahead of time.
Oh, yeah.
So you take advantage of the discounted rate?
And that's, I mean, we will rent the park 16 times in a year. 17 times in a year, so... Okay. Thank you.
Counselors, what, in motion to table die, is there anything else you'd like to do when we die in the city?
One of the requests that I had, or suggestions or requests, however you want to phrase it, was to do the consistency, because there were some inconsistencies in just the formatting between the different structures, and so is that something we're going to revisit and try to...
That's simple enough. As long as we don't fundamentally alter the agreement, we can certainly add an extra-half inch to the margin or go to a normal small...
No, I just meant like make each thing match.
If I can comment on that, it's kind of hard to do, because, one, you're renting a park, and if...
Right, right.
Take my copy of it, but if you look at it, all the things don't apply, so if you look at the, the numbering is totally different, and it has to be, because when you're talking about a park, there's a lot more things when it comes to security than you are Brookside when you're talking about...
Sorry, let me interject. The email I sent was specifically, I quoted Brookside and AMC because they are the two building structures, and like you said, a park does have different logistics.
Right.
And I completely understand that. But I specifically talked about Brookside and AMC, because if you say in one, you can't burn candles, but you can in the other, just kind of things like that, that would be like, if I came in and I were going to rent multiple facilities, and one day I would go, "Well, why are these different? This doesn't make sense. And so that was more of what I was implying and so, and that's why I tried to, my email probably could have been expounded on that, but...
Listen, level 11 OCD right there, but...
Hey, hey, it's...
The candles, the reason they're so restrictive on Brookside, it is a little wooden building and so it's very restrictive. We have more than just one thing on Brookside. When you look at AMC with, what are they, two-foot thick concrete wall or rock, you know, block walls?
Ray was still here, he could tell us.
Um, yeah, it's not as scary. If you're talking about a candle at North Park, probably not as scary. That's why they're all different and it's based on the, you know, the facility.
Right. Well, I was just, just from my thought process, the quote, rental procedures or the general rules would be standard and then for each different facility, you would kind of have those quirky things that would apply to, like, here's the quirks for Brookside, the specifics for Brookside, here's the specifics for AMC, here's the specifics for North Park. Is that better?
Yeah, I mean, I thought that's the way it is. If you want to rewrite them, and I'll put them back on the agenda tomorrow because I, I mean, I've beat my head on the wall on these. Matter of fact, a few months ago with the mayor, we sat down and went through every one of these and changed them. They were pretty archaic the way they used to be written. We did a lot of changes, which the council approved, but if you'd like to change them again, I'd be worried about it.
And here's what I can also say too, is if it's just a matter of putting general rules at the top, that's something we probably, now they won't necessarily be identical underneath, but we can certainly put the section headers in some order or...
Well, my concern is... I mean, I do where council alongs going. I mean, I think the one thing that I didn't like about this, they don't look uniform. Now, I think that we can have passed them tonight because I think the language is there and then I think that it's something that we should look at is to make them uniform. But I think what council along is trying to say, don't let me put words in your mouth, so, shut me out. But, you know, there's, there's 10 rules that apply to all rules.
Yeah.
And then there's four rules that apply just to Brookside and there's four, five rules that apply to Armory. So those 10 rules should look the same on every agreement. They should be, you know, rule number one, rule number one, rule number one, should be the same on Brookside, Armory, AMC and the park, what the park applies. Those 10, so it should all look uniform. Now, when you then flip the page, Brookside has little rules that are specific to it, like you can't add a candle and Armory has a rule specific to it, like you can't have glitter. So then those should be rule, you know, be, you know, down on the next page. So you're talking about the rental procedure versus then the general rules versus then a rule specific to this, you know, facility, which I think we have in there. And so again, like I think that we have, you know, you all have done a good job of putting all of the correct wording together and then there just needs to be...
We can arbitrarily reorder it.
Right. There needs to be something that makes it look more...
So if you look at things...
Because even the headings, I mean, like the, the Armory is like a weird wedding theme as the header, which should be the letterhead because it's a little tall.
That is an excellent observation.
And then, you know, the Brookside looks different than even Armory. But I think those are things that, again, I don't know that we're voting on, I don't know that we're supposed to be voting on the way the form looks from more of the content that's in...
If you all approve the content, we can reorder it to make it more consistent.
Do you want to approve the fee schedule?
That's all I'm saying, if you approve the wording.
So you guys...
We can, yeah, we can address the structure and the cosmetics.
Yeah, I'll change the formatting, make them all identical. But I mean, they all pretty much, they all start out with rental procedure, rental procedure, rental procedure. I mean, they all have the same things.
They're very close.
Page 39, page 44 and 51, it's just the formatting at the top is different.
Well, and when you, when you kind of go, and I don't know that we want to do that tonight, but when you go step by step and look at each one and compare 111 and 222, there are some, and I understand why certain things are different, I completely understand that, but, like, just to reiterate what Stephen said, I think, I don't know rent, would you agree with the consistent formatting?
Absolutely. It's easier than to reference. You can say our first rules, 1 through 12, are all the same on all these properties and...
Right.
If you approve the wording, we can make it happen very easy.
Well, then, I mean, since we have different wording on each one, which wording, I mean, would you recommend as quote this standard?
If you approve the agreements, we can make them match as closely as possible given the policies that you will want to implement.
I mean, really, I think that we are approving the fee schedule. I think the...
That's the significant change.
All the other...
Stuff is darn near minimal.
Stuff is, right, it's kind of administrative.
It really kind of is.
From here, I don't care if there's glitter at the AMC.
Just don't burn it down.
Just don't burn it down, but I more care that it costs, you know, this amount of funding to rent this amount.
Right.
That's just my, you know, I don't want to pick up the title, I just want to...
Last time I tried to create a style guide for these documents, I got laughed out of the room, but...
Do you need to bring up more OCD talk maybe?
I guess so. You're level 11, I'm about a nine, so I get it.
But you see, you know, if you guys see somebody trying to take advantage of the discount part of it, we can revisit that.
We're good gatekeepers on that. We say no.
And there is some flexibility, you know, like if somebody leaves it an hour before and half an hour late, I mean, we're not gross to where we're saying, nope, you have to be out exactly at this time.
And I want to, I want to say this too, it's difficult for us to both remember and convey the sheer odd, the oddities that we get as requests. Can we have it from 2 to 4 and then go to lunch, do more stuff there and come back from 10 as well, but, you know...
So we only have to pay the $40?
Yeah, and we're just not going, no? You know, I mean, so we try to keep it pretty tight and I know sometimes that can be irritating as you move into bureaucratic, but people will try to worm their way into the weirdest thing ever. It is really crazy. The only good to see a lot of that, we try to keep that from being, I could write a tell-all book, but... Can I get a motion to approve these and then we will try to get them into an order that is acceptable? It's on the...
Is there a second to council hire's motion? Second to council hire's motion for approval? Oh, I didn't hear you, I apologize.
Now, will that include the recommended change for...
The motion didn't include that, but it's, you want to amend your motion?
I don't because I can't state it.
Okay.
Right for now, but I think that we can, I mean, I'd like to come back and visit that. And so I will be here on the 4th, but if I can put the language together because, or I can do it mid-Month in July.
In mid-Month of June or July?
June.
June. I was like, how long have you got on this trip?
I'm only off for a week though, again, Ray earlier said that he missed, he was moving us into July, so I looked again and then moved myself into July as well.
For the record, this is a size 12 aerial.
Oh, right.
Okay, I just want you to know, since I tied it some years ago. Clerk, give us a roll call.
Counselor hires?
Yes.
Counselor long?
Yeah.
Counselor combs?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number 24, discussion of possible action to approve legal services agreement with Grant T. Lloyd and BJ Baker. Carr?
If you look, you can see in red, I made, changes have been made. I also, that comment you had on removing the 40K out of where it shows the existing amount?
Right.
I took that out on both of them, or it will come out.
So now it will start with the 42, correct?
Correct. It'll just read, attorney received a 5% increase from...
Got all of my contracts fixed up.
Would you like to give us some advice on this topic?
Sure do.
Would you like to...
I think I did. Stayed in the Holiday Inn about this time last year.
The rest of it's just pertaining to dates. On the very beginning, where it says the agreement made, this talks about the dates. At the end there, it'll say, herein, hereafter, she'll be referred to as attorney on one. On the other one, it'll, it says, and who herein, after, she'll be referred to as prosecutor. And then we added on, the second one on page 60, we added an address for BJ Baker because there was no address on the original, so we changed that. And those are the only changes that I have on there.
I have a question. And it's about, we, the, so this contract is good for 12 months with an additional 12 months, you know? But I thought that by the charter, the city attorney is appointed by the mayor and is essentially good until the mayor's term.
It's pretty well true, but it's easier to avoid arguing and stuff like that just by some, but yeah, I intend to appoint those two gentlemen again. This is just a legal services agreement.
So there probably should be like a back-out clause, but would you not, do we have to revisit a, a contract every year?
There's a 10-day back-out for you.
It's part of the reason the terms are short on the back-out, it's just because if he goes, his mind, or BJ hits his head or something like that and I need to, I can appoint somebody different and we have 10 days. You're not wrong about the other things too on the appointment.
Do you all have a copy of the engagement letter in front of you like you do for the CPA?
It's just an legal services agreement, that's all it is, you know, engagement letter per se, it's just a different form for the same function.
Okay. One other question, would the attorneys be able to provide their legal opinion on their stationery regarding proposed ordinances?
They would provide it on their stationery, they'd provide it on city telequels serving as the appointed function of the city attorney and city prosecutor.
Okay, so they would do, provide their legal opinion of what the intent of the legislation and the ordinance might be?
When we ask it, they can do so, yes.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the contract?
Motion to approve is their second. Second to counsel combs. Clerk, give us a roll call please.
Counselor long?
Yes.
Counselor combs?
Yes.
Counselor hires?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number 25, is discussion of possible action to approve the airport courtesy car agreement for Mr. Carr, Ms. Bliss.
So we have not had any type of agreement on that vehicle out there. The vehicle just sits out there, so now we have a new agreement on anybody who wants to use it. You want to talk on that?
Generally, pilots who might feel, some of the charter pilots who fly in that figure in the town to eat, we have a car available before, we haven't had a form before to cover our legal responsibilities with protect the city that I think everybody's concerned. You were involved in, Mr. Lloyd, myself, we made the changes, we all need to know, so it's a good agreement.
The reason this came about is I've been checking on insurance with the city clerk and one of the things I was asking about is the various things, like the golf carts, you know, they utilize those thing on our streets, you know, we have a vehicle out there that we let pilots come in and use and drive around town, so with this, when the pilots come in and use that vehicle, they have to fill out the form and have to provide their insurance, provide in case something happens.
Billings, suspenders, liability diversion, so...
I didn't know we had Curtis' car. I said, I didn't know we had Curtis' car.
Most airports do, of our size.
High class.
Probably a 410 though.
Do they have a GPS on that thing, tracking?
Yeah.
You know, one of these days I wanted to get into fleet management.
It's amazing.
We got their flying, kiss it off.
True, but airplane is collateral, I do like...
I got to tell you, I'm glad to hear that comment because of, anytime we ever say anything like that, they're like, you're trying to fire me. Not great, but just...
We purchased fleet management, we only bought a fleet of 12 a few months ago. It has revolutionized my world from a HR perspective and from just to knowing at any point in time, you know, where everything's at.
Did you use a spy on people, trying to fire them?
Every day, every day of my life, yeah. And I just wear, it says, I agree to stay within a 10-mile radius, which of course is very specific and so, I mean, you really kind of know when they take off driving a car. But like you said, it's valid point, you do have an airplane as collateral, which is probably more than value than our city car.
You're ashamed if something happened to it.
Take a golf round three any day.
But it's extremely affordable, just FYI, they're only $80 to buy and the monthly fee is super minimal. It's an awesome thing to have, especially for safety, if somebody wrecks it and they don't come back, you can track it and you can ping it and it'll actually give you like the GPS, I mean, beep, you can go find them.
Do you know how red the map will be at Del Rancho and McDonald's every morning from like, you know, 7:30 to 11?
Make a motion to approve that agreement.
Motion is second for approval, is there a second? Any questions or comments?
Just to clarify, there's no mileage limitation, just a 10-mile radius, so they could literally drive like 8,000.
I was hard-flying that one.
Cut dumbs in the parking lot, okay, just, okay, sorry.
We're all getting old, getting tired, my test, our allergies are...
That's my bedtime.
Clerk, give us a roll call please.
Counselor combs?
Yes.
Counselor hires?
Yes.
Counselor long?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Greg. Thank you, Carr. Item number 26, would you all like to go into executive session?
Not really.
But I tell you what, let me rephrase that, entertain a motion to go into executive session.
It's on the...
Is there a second?
Go ahead.
Second.
Clerk, roll call please.
Counselor hires?
Yes.
Counselor long?
Yes.
Counselor combs?
Yes.
Motion carried.
I'll tell you what, agenda back out and we'll go right back into regular session. Please take notes, ladies and gentlemen, we have a word processor error where the numbers got duplicated. 26 was going to executive session, so we're just going to make a quick note that this is actually going to be item 27 instead of 26 to reconvene and item 27 will be 28. And I'll read this because it's there, and it is discussion of possible action to the possible, to the possible purchase of real property located at or around the 800 block of Quinn Avenue, further described with that property description. So, anyway, I'm not going to read all of that. Do you all want to take any action on that property in the 800 block of Quinn? Hearing none, then we'll go to item 28, showing 27 on the agenda, but 28 is to adjourn. Is there a motion to do that?
It's on the...
Second.